Call this meeting of the common council to order, roll call please.
Alderman Teeter, here. Alderman Peg Byer.
Here.
Niles?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Brandle. Lars. Tully.
Here.
Maki.
Here.
Alderman Brandle is excused tonight. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council, would please do so, with the help of the city caller, park director.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to just let you know a couple of things. On Friday of this week, May 6th, is our Senior Center Volunteer Appreciation Day, so we will be having a meeting and a large presentation to show all of our volunteers at the Senior Center that, how much we really appreciate them. Couple of the things with this is, we will be presenting our Senior Center accreditation with the Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. This is the fourth time we have gotten this accreditation. There are only 27 senior centers in the state of Wisconsin that have this, out of about 200 senior centers. So, this is a great accomplishment for both Sheila and the advisory board, so we're pretty excited about that. The two other things that are coming up is, on this day, we are celebrating 20 years in the building for the Senior Center. So, anybody that has been around knows that that was quite the project, to get a standalone building. So, to be there for 20 years is, we're pretty excited about that. And it's also 31 years that we've had a Senior Center. So, some of you may remember, we started in the basement of City Hall, and then obviously moved over to Collins Road, but I'm letting you know, if you guys are available and would like to stop over there sometime on Friday after 12:30, that would be great, we'd appreciate it. So, thanks.
That, uh, the volunteer recognition is at 12:30?
Is at 12:30, yes. 1 o'clock, they're having a performance. Dave Freyte, relative?
He must belong to the Highwall Freyte.
Uh, no, he's rendition.
Great, thank you. Is there any other one, anyone else for public participation? Tim?
Yep, one thing. Just really, really quickly, I put lots of stuff where you sit in front of you. I would say, if you have an opportunity, there is a fairly thick document that is called the Preliminary Official Statement. That was put together because we're about to issue bonds, about $2 million worth of general obligation bonds. That sale is set for next week, Tuesday. Tomorrow, we're hoping that Moody's affirms the city's AA rating, which will help us, you know, market the bonds and get an attractive rate of interest. In terms of that document, it looks pretty imposing, but if you have a minute to look through it, it's got a lot of demographic, economic, and financial information about the community. It really is the document someone looking to maybe submit a bid to buy the bonds is going to rely on. So, it's a good snapshot. I won't tell you it's the most interesting reading, but it is a good snapshot of kind of the health of the city. And then, the other piece of paper that I set out in front of you is just a real quick synopsis of the city's metal estates subdivision. And as you know, all the lots have either closed or are under contract, closed before the end of this year. And there's a timetable when the remaining closings are taking place. And that would include all the lots, with the exception of one of the multifamily lots that's under contract with Gorman. And the reason that's not on there is, that was put under contract before we engaged a real estate broker to help us market and sell the rest of the lots. So, it's a nice time table for you to have, in terms of when the rest of these closings will take place.
Thank you, Tim. Jim, anything you'd like to announce?
I am here for the meeting to answer any questions that has to do with our upcoming kickoff, summer kickoff shrimp boil that's being held down at Rotary Park on May 14th, from 1 o'clock to 5 o'clock. It's a shrimp boil dinner, which includes the shrimp, the sausage, corn and potatoes. And we'll have refreshments there, and the band playlist that we'll be playing for entertainment. So, it's a fun time, and as this comes up on the agenda, I am here for any questions you may have. So, just want to let you be aware of that.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to my oral appointment. I'm going to ask that we substitute Alderman Niles for Alderman Brandle on the board review. Can I entertain the motion for that, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Tully, Mrs. Teeter, any questions?
Yes.
On a voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, if you're opposed.
There you go. Good.
Okay, it's unanimous. Next, we'll have a discussion on the Jefferson Housing Study. Want to get out your...
I tell you, this will be quick. I'm sorry to disappoint you, Peggy, because you've probably read the whole report. I think Sarah put it up like...
Yeah.
Put an electronic copy in your packets. I gave you a written copy of it. Hopefully, you'll have an opportunity to read it, because the consultants that put the report together, they will be at the next city council meeting. And I think we'll set the discussion for maybe about an hour, maybe even an hour and a half. It's, it is a really good read, lots of information. I would suggest that you pay particularly close attention to the last portion of the study, that's the recommendation portion of the plan. And in particular, I think we'll be talking about section number two, and that'll talk about local regulatory barriers, primarily zoning, comprehensive land use planning barriers. And section number four, which is the section that really talks about leveraging financial resources and incentives to encourage housing. And then, you know, there's other sections, and if there's time, I'm sure we'll take care of them. So, it really wasn't on to launch into that discussion tonight. I will say, for Jim and Joe, the city partnered with the Greater Watertown Foundation, boy, I think towards the end of last summer. They paid for the study, and the consultant is the Cedar Corporation, which is a land use planning corporation, kind of out of the Fox River Valley, pretty reputable company, as far as I'm concerned. They did a individualized pilot study in Watertown and in Jefferson. You know, my guess is they're going to do more work with the other Jefferson County communities. But they funded the study. We worked on it for most of the fall. There were some workshops, sessions with the city council. You guys didn't have a chance to participate. But really, this report ties all their work last fall together. And I just wanted to just bring to your attention, it's really set for discussion with the consultants two weeks from tonight. So, if you have a chance, you know, read it. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting information. Sorry, Peggy, but that's all I was going to say about it tonight.
Ah, come on. Okay. I did read a lot of this. Okay.
Does anyone have any questions with Tim? If not, we'll look forward to a more in-depth discussion at a future meeting. Next, we'll have a presentation on the pedestrian bridge lighting project.
Tim? All right. I'll pass this out. Peggy, I don't know what, okay, Bill has it on the screen, that's a, that's a good thing.
I don't know where you're at.
Yep, that is the real condensed version of tons of paperwork, Bill, so maybe you can try to cue the screen up with this. So, I think, as, as most of you know, we've been working on, I guess Dale, it's, it's a couple of years, on a project to light the pedestrian bridge. We've had some stops, we've had some starts. Most recently, we've had a start, and I'd like to think that, you know, we're moving towards the finish line. And I wanted to just tell you a little bit about this tonight. And then, we do have one action request that I'll talk about at the very, very end. But I think it's fair to say that the folks that have been working on this project, we do have a conclusion in terms of how we think the bridge should be lit. What I handed out is the proposal in terms of the hardware and the fixtures. The cost is approximately $39,000. And the idea is to place 24 fixtures on the bridge. There's three different types of fixtures, and the reason for that is, that illustration will show, is that obviously, there's a radius to the arches of the bridge. And so, where it's most narrow, you need a little narrower beam of light, so it's a little different type of fixture. So, that's why it talks about eight fixtures of three different types of varieties, for a total of 24. If you turn the page, the fixture that we're really looking at is shown on the screen. It's page two of the paper report. That's what the fixtures look like. Pretty industrially solid. They should wear and maintain for a long, long time. I think there's approximately 50-plus individualized colors, and they can be programmed that, you can create a spectrum of 100 different colors, quite frankly, when it's synchronized. The next page that I have, I'm not looking at the backs of these pages, but the next one page is just a portion of the controller. That's how the system is controlled, and the different colors changed over time. And that works in conjunction with the next page, that is really the controller, the main controller box. And that would be installed in a cabinet underneath the bridge, probably on the east end of the bridge. So, it'll be in a locked cabinet. And the way this will be set up is that, you know, we will have it so it can be programmed remotely, so someone could drive up, and as long as they get a signal, they can just reprogram it from their car, or replace it from, reprogram it from City Hall, if we get a strong enough signal. So, you won't have to necessarily doing, do it manually. The next page is just some photogenics. The next page is a black and white copy of the light. That's it right there. And the next copy after that is, keep going, one more, Bill. Keep going. Keep going one more time. Is, you know, that's really the effect that we're trying to achieve to light those arches. And, you know, we hope we'll get bones off the water as well. And as I say, you can program these things on a timer. I don't know that we've decided with finality, but we're talking about something like dark till 11 or 12 o'clock, or something like that, not to, not to have it on all night. But that is really the, the type of effect that we're trying to achieve. I think there's a couple more, maybe, Bill, in here. If you're walking on the path, that's really what you would see. And the one we just, the one we just had up, you know, if you're looking at from the north or from the south. But the 24 fixtures should really light that bridge in pretty amazing fashion, I would think. So, the total cost of the project, so, the proposal we have here is approximately $39,000. The installation labor, which we would have done locally, plus some other direct purchase materials, is approximately another $35,000. So, we're looking combined at somewhere about a $75,000 project. So, I'm going to ask Dale to talk about the funds that have been raised to date. And mind you, really, we really haven't started an aggressive public campaign yet. And we've got, I think, most of these funds either committed as cash in the bank, or as pledges.
There's about, there's a fund at the Jefferson Community Foundation, and to date, that contains about $35,000. We had two generous gifts from Jefferson Utilities of 10,000 and 11,000, I think it was, both in excess of 10,000. And a very generous gift from Jefferson Rotary Club of $10,000. So, what we'd like to do now is to move into the public appeal part, portion of this, and entertain donations from the public. It could be a dollar, it could be $10,000, $100,000, $1,000, or maybe even more from some local, some corporations. So, that's really where we're at, at this point. There has been an anonymous donor that said that that person would contribute up to $30,000. So, we're within $10,000 of our goal right now. Kind of a secondary goal that we had discussed was the possibility of, to not repeat with this, but to highlight the whole riverfront, would be to put some lights on the dam, some dawn lighting that just kind of lit up the water, but kind of beautify the whole area down here. Make this area someplace that's safe for people to come down at night. We've got Jan's fans going back up soon. We have the yet-to-be-named goat, Yellow Goat out there already. Those guys have got that out here. And we think this is, as much as we get people down here for the Christmas lights in the wintertime, we think it'll be that kind of attraction in the summertime. Create another reason for people to come to downtown Jefferson. Let's see what color the bridge is this week. So, that's what, we'd like, Tim and I have been working together with contractors, both local current electric, and this is one of their, these guys actually submitted a proposal five years ago, when we initially started this, and like Tim said, we had some starts and stops. So, they're not, they're not new to the project. In fact, they had some good suggestions. And they, they brought in one of the fixtures. It's a heavy metal industrial strength. And we're very, we both felt a lot better about this particular piece of lighting hardware than some of the other stuff we looked at, that looked a little bit more residential in nature. And this is something that we think, hopefully, will be vandal proof, and will serve the city well for many years to come. The lights have a, like a $100,000, a $100,000 hour lifetime. So, they aren't going to burn out, and they shouldn't burn out in, you know, 20 years. And it'll be, you know, I guess the council will make the ultimate decision about the time of the lighting, and what time we turn them off at. Somewhere...
You know, what warranties are going to be given?
Yeah. So, a three-year warranty? Three-year warranty, yeah. Don't get much of electronics stuff.
LED, they're pretty efficient to run. Really, kind of the good thing about this, it wasn't that long ago, we were talking with people who were suggesting we would have to work from underneath with a barge, really much more expensive. These would go on the bridge deck, and I don't think they'd be really too obtrusive where you would notice them. You know, the 24, 12 on each side, think about the luminaires, you know, there's conduit and, you know, wire that string together, and it ties back into the controller. Kind of not really as sophisticated as you think it might be, but that controller really allows for a wide palette of lighting. So, here's what we'd really want to ask you tonight. I think it's resolution number eight. We are quite sure we have the money to pay for the equipment. And it's proprietary stuff, so it's not like we're going to run out and solicit bids. We're buying the equipment from Enterprise Lighting. We'll go through one of two or three different houses that they sell their product through, like Graybar, you know, local, local companies, either Madison, Milwaukee. We'd like to ask you for the permission to order this system. It's a minimum of eight weeks, could be 12 or 16 weeks of factory production time. We want to get in a queue, because we'd like this project to happen before the summer. So, I would say, we have the money, either cash, or we have a solid pledge to pay for this. And we'd probably be a little short at this point in time, once we add in the installation cost, and some other direct purchasing materials. We need to raise a little bit more money, but we don't need that at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have one question. Who would be, like, running the, the different lights? Like, who would be taking charge of that?
That's, that's to be determined.
Ah, okay.
Probably someone on city staff.
Does it come with, like, pre-programmed, you do a green lights for St. Patrick's Day?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll help us set it up, and they said it's fairly, they will provide training so that we can do it ourselves. That would be the idea.
So, Tim, this is proprietary in nature, so there's really no value in going to bid.
Right. That's correct.
What is our plan for vandalism?
It's my understanding that the, we talked to about it, and based on the locations of how this will be mounted, it'll be mounted on the outside of the fence, therefore, they have not had any, they didn't have any concerns with vandalism there. The control box that would be mounted underneath, there's still some discussion as far as how that would have to be done, but it'd have to be in some type of lockbox, which is why a remote unit to be able to control would be ideal.
Do you have any day handles delivered to the rest of the...
Yes. It'd be very difficult to get access to it.
Anybody else?
It'd be cool to see it like a grand opening lighting, like, like the lighting kickoff, you know?
That's the plan.
Yeah, okay.
I think it'll be a spectacle, my fellow.
Good idea.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move on to tonight's consent agenda then. Alderman Schrader, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is resolution number five, made resolved by the county council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for May 3rd, '22 is hereby adopted. That includes vouchers payable for May 2022 in the amount of $485,955.29. A payroll summary for April 22nd, 2022, in the amount of $170,043.47. Council members from the April 19th, 2022 meeting of the common council, and licenses as approved by the regulatory committee, which were operators licenses, sales of goods in railway Pever Bates LLC, class B picnic license to Jefferson Lions Club Shrimp Oil at Rotary Park, liquor license for Clickas Rock and Ball Incorporated, and finally, class B picnic license for the Meek Lekite Days for the Mayball on May 7th, and the Meek Lekite Days itself on September 16th through the 18th. I move approval of resolution number five.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman Teeter. Any discussion, any questions or comments?
Are you looking at selling beer at the fairview?
Yes, they do. In that background, they do.
If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Peg Byer.
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Maki?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution number six, a resolution authorizing a special event permit between the city of Jefferson and Jefferson Lions Club. Alderman Byer, please.
She is, um, Alderman...
I hope there are council members, and the citizens of Jefferson, city of Jefferson, resolution number six. Whereas Jefferson Lions has approached the city of Jefferson to consider holding its first annual shrimp boil on May 14th, 2022, and whereas Jefferson Lions' subvention is to improve health and well-being, strengthen communities, and support those in need through humanitarian services and grants, and impact lives globally, and encourage peace and international understanding. And whereas Jefferson Lions has submitted a special event permit, which has been approved by staff, and whereas the Lions, Jefferson Lions has requested a fee waiver for the park's shelter reservations and Rotary Park, and now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein, approved and ratified as a special event permit, and waived the shelter rental fee between the city of Jefferson and the Jefferson Lions to conduct the shrimp boil in Rotary Waterfront Park. I would promote.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Schrader. Welcome, Lion Jim. Do you have, anyone have any questions for Lion Jim?
I just love it when you say that at the beginning.
We are requesting that the $100 be waived for the service organization, Jefferson Lions, for the park rental. It is one of our fundraisers, this year it's our only fundraiser so far, to support the community, the services. So, every little bit helps, and we really appreciate the council, and looking at waiving the rental fee of the park to help us out.
Okay. Does that include... It wasn't. Peggy, would you like to amend your motion to waive the $100 rental fee?
I would, yes, I would promote your amendment.
Okay. And Jim?
Yes.
You threw that out of your second, okay. So, the resolution would be to approve the event permit and waive the $100 fee. Does anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Maki?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Alderman Peg Byer?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number seven, a resolution approving a final plat of Conservancy Place subdivision. Alderman Niles, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, citizens of Jefferson County numbers. City of Jefferson, resolution number seven, approving the final plat for Conservancy Place subdivision. Whereas the city of Jefferson, as the developer, has requested final approval of the Conservancy Place plat, known as the plat. And whereas the city of Jefferson Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the plat on April 26th, 2022. And whereas the final plat of Conservancy Place and the documents relating heretofore will comply with section nine, 294, subdivision of land of the city of Jefferson Municipal Code. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, that the final plat for Conservancy Place is hereby accepted and approved, subject to the final review by the Department of Administration, and all easements and dedicated right-of-way to be accepted by the common council of the city of Jefferson. Be it therefore resolved that upon approval by the Department of Administration, that the common council authorizes the mayor to sign the final plat for Conservancy Place, to be recorded at the Jefferson County Register of Deeds. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Tully?
Bill?
Bill, are we okay?
I'll, uh, I can discuss this.
Okay.
Okay.
So what you have in front of you is the final plat. And I'll just briefly describe. We've got the 10 lots along Dewey. We've had a lot of discussion about those. Those lots are approximately 100 feet apiece. Matches current zoning. We also have the lots, um, which are 11 through 19. That was approved at the plan commission. And then the final plat was also recommended by the plan commission last week. One item that I failed to include in the resolution that I just wanted to bring your attention, Chris may have to just kind of walk us through this. I need one additional motion. There is an existing easement that simply runs through the, through the property right here that extends through the property and through the proposed lots 6 and 7. That was an emergency access easement for the golf course years ago. It's no longer needed. It is not a utility easement or anything like that. We've indicated on here that we simply want to, um, release that easement. So what I would ask prior to the approval is that, and Chris, if you could explain the best way to do this, to simply have a motion to release, um, the easement. And I'll just call it number 1012993. Once that's approved, then the, um, when the plat is approved, that'll be removed by the surveyor. So when it's sent to the Department of Administration, that easement will not be on there. It will not affect lots 6 or 7.
Yeah, I think it'd be cleaner if we had a separate motion releasing that emergency easement that's shown on, uh, on the draft of the plat. And then we can move to approve the, uh, the plat itself.
Then we can do that before.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
To release? Would someone like to offer that motion to release the easement?
I'll make that motion to release the easement.
Good.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Joe. Any questions about that?
So the way I understand it is the surveyor will redo the, uh, the plat, taking that out.
Correct.
Okay. Yep.
What did he call it, easement?
Emergency.
Emergency access easement. And, and just so you know, the, uh, what we're releasing is on the city's property. The easement that is still showing between lots 48 and 49 of Fairway Place will still remain in place. That's a separate document that's recorded as part of the Fairway Place subdivision.
Good. All right. So we're going to vote on releasing the easement first?
Yep, first.
Okay. All in favor signify by, of releasing the easement, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name.
Alderman Schrader?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Maki?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Peg Byer?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Now we'll vote on the, uh, resolution approving the final plat of Conservancy Place subdivision without the easement. All in favor signify by saying aye as your name is called. No, if you're opposed.
Alderman Tully?
Aye.
Maki?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Great job, everyone. This has really turned out well. And, uh, it's going to be nice and well to help, sir. Next, we'll move on to resolution number eight, a resolution authorizing, uh, Milwaukee Street Pedestrian Bridge Lighting Project. Alderman Teeter, please.
I would like to make a motion to order the materials for the bridge lighting.
Okay.
In, in the amount of, uh, the $39,059?
Yes.
Did I say that? For the amount of $39,059.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Chick got in on that one. All right. Is there any other questions? You have to quit. We didn't get there. Any other questions about the, the bridge lighting project? We had a presentation earlier. And, uh, this is to order the fixtures at this time. The lead time is approximately two to three months. So we'd like to have it installed by the end of summer. So if it's, uh, if there are no other questions, all in favor, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. No, if you're opposed.
Alderman Maki?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Forward. Resolution number nine, a resolution authorizing the chemical cleaning of well number two. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Offerman. Whereas the Jefferson Water and Wastewater Utility has well number two down for emergency repairs. And whereas the Jefferson Water and Wastewater Utility in water quality investigations, the utility's well consultant agreed that the work should be performed prior to new piping and pump to be reinstalled into the well. And whereas the Jefferson Water and Wastewater Utility has obtained pricing from municipal well and pump for this maintenance in the amount of $65,147. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein authorizes municipal well and pump to perform the work for $65,147. And be it further resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson that the city administrator is herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the city of Jefferson, following its review by the city attorney. We have it so moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Joe. And Todd, we are here tonight. We discussed, uh, previously, would you like to have any questions or anything you'd like to add, Todd?
Uh, no, just that, uh, this, we did televise. We found that the biofilm was, was existing. This will also help with our radium levels at the well. And it doesn't make sense putting new equipment into the same situation that ate up the old, the old equipment. So, um, kind of a twofold bonus for this. We, uh, give this cleaned up, reduce our radium. And then we could also have chemical piping that will be installed also where we can shock treatments. And we don't have to do this mechanical and chemical cleaning from this point forward. Keep everything with a, with a chemical feed from above.
Okay. So anyone have any questions?
Mayor, we did discuss this in streets and finance and it was approved unanimously.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number nine, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. No, if you're opposed.
Alderman Teeter?
Aye.
Peg Byer?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Maki?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Joe? I'll voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Good night, Peg.